All right, welcome everyone to the Hanson's Zone and Board of Appeals Hearing today, September 14th, 2021, held in Meeting Room A, Second Floor, Hanson Town Hall. I'm Kevin Perkins, Bill Cushing and Sean Buckley. The first application we have is 7:00 PM, Brookside Realty Case Number 21 AP 04 for 1139 Main Street. This hearing was continued from July 20th, 21. I'll read the hearing notice into the record. Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM at Hanson Middle School under Master General Law, Chapter 40A on the application of Brookside Realty LLC for a special permit under Town of Hanson Zoning Bylaws Section 6 HT and Section 8D Site Plan Approval under Town of Hanson Zoning Bylaws Section 7G1 and a variance under Town of Hanson Zoning Bylaws Section 7B. Table of Dimensional Requirements in Section 9B2, A through C to allow for the raising of the existing structure and construction of two 30-foot by 40-foot residential condominiums with associated site improvements and signage, each building having two one-bedroom units at 1139 Main Street, MAP 43, WAT 36A, Hanson Assessors MAP. Properties in a flexible overway zone and commercial industrial zone. So this hearing was continued to tonight, September 14th, 7:00 PM. Mr. Crowell, if you want to just get us going into this with where you're at.
I'm gonna just go through the drawings first.
Sure, yeah.
And hit all the items.
Yeah, if you want to go through a quick presentation overview and then we'll go through just line item by line item on the review, just make sure everything's addressed or anything outstanding, that'd be great.
Yep, all right. Yesterday, yesterday we actually went back out there and put two new holes and they fall right in the middle of the two infiltration systems. That was one of the things he wanted to do and the information is up here. And basically it matched everything that we had before, the water elevation, the power elevations are all good. So that was good to see. Okay, this is the layout plan. And a couple of the comments we can show, this is a snow storage area and I've got it shown where it's not over the proposed septic system, which is right in hand. It shows right up to it. The other, one of the other comments that you mentioned you had was that we only have parking enough for the two spaces per unit, which we met. But he wanted to have guest parking or additional parking, so. So the other day I just added guest parking, I just called it a stone parking area right here, so if somebody came they could park in there. And his comment was, well, he should just pay him. I don't know if that's something we need or not, but that's what I, I tried to do, something that was the, did the least amount of work and didn't affect any of the drainage. That's what I did. So, so the last time we were in here, we gave you, we showed what we're trying to do. And since then, we tweaked everything and made, made everything work. It is an 18-foot driveway that's been approved before and the fire department's fine with that. All the spaces are nine by 18. So we have eight spaces right now. And again, they're one-bedroom units, four one-bedroom units, so there's only four bedrooms there. Couple things that we added, we wanted to see a section of, a section of the swale that we got here, it's a section there. And this is the plunge pad, you want to detail that. And in the back here, for grading purposes, we needed to add a wall and the top of the wall's at 62 and the bottom varies a little bit from 61 to around 59 feet at the bottom of the wall. And it would be a segmental wall, it would be sitting on, on gravel or stone. And that's what we're proposing. And here, and also we've added a breakout area that'll hold the wall. So the two, the two test holes that we did, this is, this is where they are, they're pretty much in the middle of the infiltration systems. These two, the next plant looks very similar to that, but it shows all the utilities. So I met with the water department and he had suggested that we either connect to the 12-inch ducted line, water line out of the street, either in one or two places. So I have it shown here, just cutting one trench across and then you'd make all the connections right there in an area like this. So you have one-inch lines coming from each one and then they would just go across and then trench go across the way. And that's what we're proposing there. Each, each unit would have gas going to it. You're trying to keep the trenches going across, so you have gas, gas, and then you have another one right there. So we're trying to minimize the disturbance to the street. And so that's the water, the gas, and underground utilities. There's a pump right here and on the underground. In the back, we would have the septic system, so we'd have four-inch lines coming out of each building. And then it would go to a six-inch collector here that would go into a 2,500-gallon septic tank. And it's pumped up slightly and it is a 1,500-gallon pump chamber, I believe. And then it goes to a Presby system, it goes to a B-Box and then it's all there. So it's, it's only 440 gallons a day and we're using advanced Presby, which is considered a treatment, a treatment system. So we thought that would be a good thing because of the proximity to the wetlands. That's, that's the septic system there. I guess we're gonna, we'll try and submit it tomorrow and just get all the paperwork filled out and just give them copies of it. And we just added these, again, these two test holes were added, very similar to the test holes that we did for the septic system. Just a point of interest, when we did these test holes back here, we, we actually did de-watered perk to get the perk test. And when we did so, we removed all the material and the health agent was there and we put, we put sand in there. So when we put the system in, you won't have to make a mess or dig it out, so it's already ready to go. This is the landscape plan, one comment that he had, I just, I tried to make all the changes from the last, and I was gonna do that. He just wants to have a table that lists what type of trees these are and the quantity. And that's the only thing I have to do for that. It's a minor thing, I believe. And so this is also considered erosion control plan. So we have, the entire site is wrapped with a soil sock going all the way around this. It's also the edge of construction. And we have it going along the front. Previously, I didn't have this going along the front and I do now. So I had that one, that was one of his comments. And this is, this would be the stone entrance, so that'd be a quarter to inch stone there so the trucks go in and out. Hopefully remove some of the muck on that without bringing out the street. So that's what we're proposing there. This is the detail sheet and this shows is the swale that we're having. We can go back to the swale later. But there's two infiltration systems, there's one, this one here, it's 18-inch CMP, it's corrugated metal pipe. And this one here has 12-inch corrugated metal pipe and there's stone all around it. So there's a big pipe here, a big header here, and then the 18 inches go out this way. And on this particular one, we have a four-inch line that goes out, if it gets up to a certain height, it can bleed out and it goes into the swale. And one of the things that he had mentioned, he wanted to see that go further back and it was coming out somewhere over in here and we pushed it back and he was fine with that. The other thing that we did to collect all of the runoff, we added a trench, a trench grade right along the run. So we have a trench grade here and he still wanted a couple, so I just, I just added these spot grades there, the spot grades on the trench. So it's 60.8, yeah, 60.63 and 60.6 inch base. So we're pretty much catching all of the runoff. There's a break, we have a break here. The break is somewhere going across here where the water goes this way and it goes this way. So we're catching all of the runoff going into the street. And that was one of his concerns, so I took care of that. Is it just the details? That's the detail of the trench grade. And that shows the trench grade going catch base and. And we're also using two storm sectors. So there's a storm scepter here and there's a storm scepter catch base and then three up here. So all of the, so all of this stuff gets collected there before it gets into the, before it infiltrates the ground. And so another one of the comments that he made was, I had shown him on some of it, but he wanted the comment showing this off. This front sheet here, this one here is correct. Basically 52.3 is real, move and replace this, so that elevation up, price on 52.3, one of them's a little bit low. So when they go to put the system in, they need to take out the silo and remove that and then put in a good sand and then they cut. So that's, those are the drawings and I can get to the comments.
Do you want, do you want to go through this?
Yeah, I think, do you want, you want to just run through that, Bob?
Sure.
Or just kind of go through it all and we can follow along?
Yep. So, go to the second page. So first thing on news regulate minimum setback requirements. So the plan has been revised from two-unit buildings to one full-unit building and the front setback has been increased from 12, to 12 feet. And the side setback has been increased to 12.6, a variance from the setback requirement is still required. So you as the ZBA need to grant us that variance. Okay.
So can I just stop you both?
Sure.
So what you're saying is that you, the existing structure that was there, the side was, was it existing on the side? I know it's on the plan, but is it 3.2 feet or something?
Yeah, 3.2 or 3.4 feet.
They like double.
Okay. So the existing building was at 3.2 or approximately, or 3.4?
Yep.
And then the front was at what, 6?
Yeah, it was around 6.4 feet.
So you've almost doubled the, the non-conformity on that side in front?
Yeah.
Triple it then?
Yes. So if you look at the layout plan, it shows the building, it shows this is where it is now.
Yep.
And the other thing it doesn't show, I didn't show on this, just for clarity, is it's got the big set of steps. The steps are kind of, I don't know, six or seven feet. I mean, man, monsters. So it probably runs almost to the property line and maybe past it.
It comes past it, actually.
Yeah. So I, I took that off for clarity.
Are they covered steps? They're roofed?
No, no, just concrete, solid.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that's all.
Yep. Okay. All right. Okay, uses permitted on the special permit landscaping and buffer area requirements.
You could probably just move right to his comments, I guess?
Yeah, okay. And basically, what I've, okay. The design engineer has stated in the response letter that we are waiting for plans and the landscape architect and they have done for this meeting. We recommended the plan include a table showing the size, number and species of the plants, whichever, I make any other changes I didn't get on, but I can, it's, it's about an hour and a half to do that, to put that on.
Yeah, I think if we can clean that up, show, get all the more detail on that.
All right, so that's the.
Okay, so going down to 3B, the location of the existing water main on Main Street has been shown on the plans as recommended. Design engineer has stated in the response letter, he has spoken to the water superintendent and the plan has been revised to provide for one-inch water services. This should be reviewed and approved by the water. I was, I was with him. I've been to him about four times about this part, different things, but, so we, we agreed what, what needed to be done.
That's what the water department would prefer, is four one-inch taps. Now, what about, what about the fire suppression system?
You know, so there, I think that, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the existing tap that's there for that building is a two-inch.
Okay.
And if that's the case, we'll have to explore that. You know, dig it up.
Yeah. What size tap do you need for the fire suppression?
I'm pretty sure it's two-inch. I'm gonna talk to the fire department.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
For that number of units, probably.
Yeah.
Boy, yeah, I don't know.
Two-inch. So if the, if the existing tap that's there is two-inch.
Yeah, if there's an existing tap, utilize it.
For fire suppression. If it's not a two-inch, if it's a one-inch, then one of the taps we do will be a two-inch tap for fire suppression.
I mean, I think probably the consensus of the board would be that whatever the water department is requiring, that's, I mean, what we're gonna stand behind.
Yes, of course.
Did you, you have anything?
I was gonna ask, is it a dry system?
I've, I haven't looked into a dry system yet, but the thought has crossed my mind. Especially the way the building's gonna be that we can run it through the attic, you know what I mean?
What's a dry system tank?
No, there's no water in the.
There's no water at all.
Until it's needed.
Like a gas station type system.
Oh, okay.
But I did talk to one of the lieutenants and I don't remember which one, the fire department. And I asked him questions about it and he was unclear himself, what we're gonna need and what size tap. So, I mean, when we get to that point, obviously we will, I would assume would be a condition in the building permit, that it's the fire suppression, either a wet or dry system.
And obviously the water department requires a second tap for that, for the fire suppression.
And so if it is a wet system, one thing that's not on the plan is a shed for that. You know, you gotta put the, the system in this little four-by-six shed on the exterior of the building, which would go on the left side there. But we couldn't put it on the right side because it would interfere with the parking lot.
Right. Well, that would be the best place for it to.
So they're gonna be attached to the structure or is it gonna be a detached structure or something?
Typically, it's just a little shed that attaches so you can go in.
Just a little doghouse or something.
Like a little doghouse.
It's a utility room, basically, right?
Uh, just for the water.
For the water, yeah.
Just for the water. So the fire department can go in and turn the valve on, off.
Either way, it wouldn't, if you put it in that corner, it wouldn't increase the non-conformity to the left and certainly you have coverage to the rear.
Correct.
So, yeah, so I mean, I guess that would be, you know, similar to the, you know, water health stuff, I mean, that would be.
Yeah, conditional on water department approval and, you know, building co-re requirements, I guess, would be.
Yeah, absolutely.
The next section of 3D is called the drainage analysis, which not revise use of the rainfall depth as requested by the conservation commission. Conservation Commission, I've been around with them, but they wanted to use higher numbers, but they're not in the regulations. And if we were to do that, we'd be the first ones to use these higher regulations. Until they're in the regulations, I'm not using them. So that's, that's the bottom line. So unless they put them in their regulations, I'm not gonna do it.
So just to clarify, this was not something that, so it was something that was requested to be used by the conservation commission?
It was at one time, yeah. And I may have had a discussion, but I don't know, may have muddled with the other project down the street.
Okay.
But they didn't use it in the other project.
So we had, we actually opted and had created a, I had to do extra things and I, so we got rid of it. I said, well, no, if nobody else is doing it, we're not doing it. So I probably get rid of, it would have cost another $40,000, $50,000 worth of stuff in the ground. So we said, no, let's, so we, so anyway, everything's good.
All right, I mean, that's just maybe something we should clarify with Peter as to, I mean, I'm just assuming by his comment on this that the drainage analysis was not revised using rainfall depth as required.
Right.
I mean, sorry, as requested by the conservation business. So to me, I'm, I'm understanding that the conservation commission requested that you use these and that it's not necessarily a requirement. I mean, that's something I guess.
It is a requirement, yes.
So Mr. Chairman, so just to clarify, so is Concom taking care of the stormwater on this?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
They do. And we're gonna be submitting it either tomorrow or the next day. And I've had some discussions with them.
So, so is this kind of outside of our purview, I guess, what I'm saying? I mean, we're not, we're not handling stormwater, right?
Yes, we are. Well, here's the thing, basically, when you put a site together like this.
Yes.
Everything's intermingled.
Right.
And I, you can't do this, you can't say, oh, conservation's, you have to have one person reviewing it. And that's, that's, you know, that's why Peter reviews it and that's what happened on the other one down. And that's the only way you can get it done.
I understand, I'm the one who, I'm the one who intermingled Concom and the site plan at the time together. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying.
But, yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're responsible.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that if you had a conservation approval today.
Right.
That would include the stormwater.
Correct.
And that would include any setbacks, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, sorry, that would include the stormwater, any setbacks from any wetlands and, you know, that's not, that's what I'm saying. So what I'm trying to say is, I know it's all intermingled, but it's not, you understand what I'm saying? We're not really handling stormwater, we're kind of handling the variances and site plan approval, even though they're intermingled, I get it.
But Pete, you know, I mean, much of, much of what we did for this project was the stormwater drainage. And Peter reviewed it and he went through it and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I understand, okay. I was just noting that, you know.
Okay. The next slide down here at the bottom of the fold, the location of the soil test bits have been shown and he suggested that we add the remove and replace at that elevation, which I talked about before. And so that's already been done for us.
That's right, they can keep going, it's not right.
We go to the next.
So, I'm sorry, so, so we went to four, five and six, that's just a sheet detail?
Yeah, I, I added that to it.
Okay.
And I think I should show you that. And also on each plan, I put a note on that. So I added this note and it, you know, it says, our material down to elevation 52.3 plus or less. Well, that's already done. So, anything else is done there? The next page, in the middle of the page, says, location of the overflow pipe has been moved, I think, I mentioned that, by six feet, but may still cause erosion to the gravel drive. The gravel drive is not, basically. So this is where the swale is and there's an existing, was an existing gravel drive. Now, it's, it's hard to distinguish where it is right now. Basically, we're coming out here and we're gonna have riprap in there and that'll slow it down. And it's not gonna be pouring out, just that when it gets to a certain elevation, a certain time it'll get up that high and it'll just go out this way. So I, I don't see that as being a problem. It asks to, the details have been added and I doubled the size of the, these are the details and maybe we'll halve that size and I doubled them up. So that has been taken care of. That's been done. The following sheet. This detailed cross-sections of the erosion control pad have been added to the grading and drainage stream. And that is, this detail here, that has been taken care of. We still recommend, we still recommend that proposed spot grades be presented on the plans at the entrance. And I added, I added the spot grades right there, that's done.
Those were the revisions of what we had on the plan, what you brought tonight, right?
Yes.
I think those spot grades were added, yep?
Yep. So, as recommended, the cross-sections that are shown on sheet four of the plans, we recommend that a cross-section be increased in size. So it just repeated itself, so like, all these details are really increased. Okay, the next page, just above on standard one at the bottom. Again, it repeats the same thing that we talked about. The location of this overflow pipe has been moved to the rear by six feet, may still cause erosion to the ground drive, it's the same.
So, what, final one page here?
Standard one untreated stormwater.
Okay, right.
It, it's just, it's the same, it's the same response as the other one and it was taken care of.
Yeah.
That's why in some of these it was three or four times.
Yep.
Okay, that's done. Okay. Okay, 3F.
3F, yep.
Okay. So it says, the plan has been revised to provide a crushed stone area for visitor parking spaces. We believe the configuration is blockwood and recommend that visitors' spaces be patominous, concrete. Traditional layout is located at the east end of the rear parking area. Location of snow area is now shown on plan. So.
So right now you're showing them as stone, right?
Yes. Well, we met the regulation, we provided eight spaces, two spaces per unit. So we did that. And now he's saying, you know, can you do visitor park?
Yep.
And just as, I said, well, we can provide an area, so if somebody does kind of like a park there and a park here. So that's, that's what I did, I think. That's what I showed. So I guess it's up to the board how they want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand his comment, it's kind of awkward and right on the, right on the radius and right on the driveway entrance. Is there anywhere else you could sneak something in or is it? I mean, you meet the requirement, you have eight.
Yeah.
It would be nice, I mean, you can never have too much parking?
We could, we could easily put one here. You couldn't put another one driving straight in.
Yep.
You could, you could have a spot here, you'd parallel park, you could put one there. Now, we could maybe put one up here, but it's a little tight here, I see.
I think if you could fit one in there and it be paved, I think it would be beneficial that, you know, as long as they can back out, I mean, you want to be able to back up and be able to pull straight out of this development, it's a busy, busy street, so.
So I guess my question. So, I, I guess my question is, so, the reason why you don't go more to the left of the parking space, is that because of the, uh, the leaching field? Is that what it is?
Yeah, oh, this, that's, I, I put it on the septic system.
Yeah.
So, here's, here's the edge of the dumpster pad here.
Yeah.
So, from, from the beginning of the Cape Cod burn, out to, to the septic system, that's eleven feet.
Okay.
So, we'd have to go another eight feet past that, so, I mean, I guess you could fit something over here, and then readjust the, the snow.
Yeah.
Movement there, you, you could, uh, well, no, you can't, you can't.
I mean, what?
Because.
Let me ask you, Mr. Crowe, is that, is that, that's a Presby design, right? Is that H twenty loading, or no?
Um, I don't have anything going over it presently, yeah.
No, I know, I'm, I'm asking, if, if you, if you wanted.
I'd have to, I'd have to double check that. I have done them underneath parking areas.
Yeah.
And you have to have, um, I think eighteen inches.
Yeah, cover.
You have to have, uh, uh, plastic over it also.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I mean, you, you meet the requirement, you have the eight spaces, that's what you need.
Yeah.
So, visitor parking is not mandated?
Right, it's, no.
It's, it's not mandated, but obviously, you know, it's, it's a special permit, and, you know, we have discretion, I just think that it does make sense to have something, so, I mean, even if you could add, like, a set of space there, I think you have a space on the other side, in between the leaching field. You have eleven feet, don't you?
It's a dumpster.
You have eleven feet, but, um, see, here, here's the parking space, here's the eighteen feet, so I can't kick it up this way. And if, if I'm going this way, then it gets into the.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, they got, they got, if you look at the septic design.
Is there ever any concern that, is that talking about doing that? Is there any concern that would?
I, I see, I see what you're, you're losing. So, now. What is your co- I mean, without looking at it, what is your coverage over the leaching field right now?
Uh, well, let me just take a quick look. Um, I, I have just, I have a foot coverage, uh, a foot over that, so, that's sixty-two, six, so, two, one. So, it's just a little over sixty-three, um, what, what's going over the system. There's a sixty-three that runs around us here.
So, sixty-three?
So, it's sixty-three, uh, and so, by the time you get over it, you have to have at least sixty-three-one over the system.
I mean, keep in mind, ideally, they're trying to keep it low, because it is a, you can see it's a pump system.
Okay, so they're trying to.
I understand. They're trying to keep it underground, so.
So, you know, we might, we would add, we would add another six inches plus pavement.
Yeah, I understand.
Another twenty inches then.
Yeah, and the shade is a factor. Uh, no, I was just trying to think of an alternative, um, of a couple of guest parking spaces, um, but, again.
What do you think, what do you think, I mean, if, instead of the proposed gravel, I mean, how would you feel about, if we could just sneak one more, you know, paved out of that area, you know?
I think, I think, I think, I think you're concerned in doing that, 'cause that changes your stormwater cals a little bit, right?
A little bit, I don't, I don't, I'll, I'll have to double check it, but it, yeah, probably not much.
I mean, it, yeah. I mean, that's obviously.
But, you know, so, this space that I have here, I've showed twelve, twelve feet, and the space is supposed to be nine feet, so, um, it would be, it would be fit rated there. I'd probably have it cocked a little bit, so it, you know, it would be like this.
Yeah, right, so, so they can back up and turn, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, bottom line is, you know, you're meeting the requirement.
Yeah.
If, if you could sneak another spot out of it, I think would be beneficial, um, but you do have eight spots, you have two per unit, that's required, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, I mean, that's just something to take a look at, if you could.
Okay.
And, again, try to make it consistent with the rest of the parking. Alright, um.
So, okay, um.
Three F, I think.
So, that's it, then, the three F, the design engineer stated in the response letter, we will be at Lasky, so, that, you know, I, I could get it done tomorrow. But I gotta go, I have to go C-COAT first thing in the morning, so, uh, I could get it done tomorrow.
Excuse me, but how, how far, how far along with, with, how far along are you with conservation?
We're, we're submitting it. I've, I've spoken with them.
Okay.
And I've talked, talked to them.
So, you, so we have time, obviously, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright.
I don't, I don't anticipate, well, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Do you have a potential hearing date with them?
Uh, I'll find out tomorrow, yeah. But I, I met with Frank on Tuesday last week, and, um. Yes.
Alright.
Some interesting things they put on there.
I'm sure. Alright, so let's, um.
So, on the next page, yeah.
Five F.
Five F. And just above that, the vertical granite curving of the driveway, this does not include the use of a transition stone. I, it's just a, a detail that they show, I just, um, I just added, I, I just did a detail on it. It's, it's just a goofy detail. It's a transition from a vertical curb, where it just stops like this, and then you have the, the Cape Cod burn. And so, if a car's coming down this way, and goes over the Cape Cod, and hits that, it's gonna do damage. So, the transition transitions it, so it meets the, the Cape Cod burn, and it's a detail, and I.
Gotcha, it's a radius thing, I gotcha.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, it happens to be on a radius, so it's a radius.
Yeah.
Transition.
Radius transition, gotcha.
I couldn't whip it off in time to be able to print all this stuff out for the meeting.
Alright.
So.
Next thing, lighting?
Five F, location of proposed lighting.
Um, you know, we show where are all the locations, we're basically having four lights, there's gonna be one in the front here. And, you know, the line's gonna, the electric line is gonna be supplied to that house, that, that unit, and there's one back here. That'll be controlled by this unit, and then, uh, there's one here for that, and then there'll be another light in the front here. I guess, I, if you can provide me a, a detail, I can just throw on a plan, it's just, it's just a.
Yes.
We, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna do a photometric plan, um, that's, that's what it is, it's just a, it's just.
It's four post lights on dusted on sensors.
I don't know if this is something you wanna do, a, a cedar post, or a white decorative?
It'd just be a square white decorative. Vinyl post with a dusted on sensor up, in the post with a light above it.
Yeah, I mean, that's the most common.
High wire, so it's not, you can't shut it off, so it'll come on, dust it on, light it up.
And how, how tall do you think you?
Well, they're nine-foot posts, so they, they're in the ground three feet, out of the ground six feet.
I was gonna say, about five or six feet above the grade roughly.
And, and where would those be located? Would those be located?
Pete, there's one hand, one hand, um, one.
One's right.
Next to the dumpster, so we light this area, this here, we light that area, and you, you have the difference later, so that's what we're proposing.
Okay.
The only thing I might suggest is the one in front of the far-left unit, maybe move that one more towards unit, we'll call it two, I guess, the second one in.
Move it over here?
Yeah, I'm just thinking maybe.
On the inside, up, up here, or down?
Yeah, some, somewhere in there, just to help, 'cause you get a long span between, if you look at, at the end, if we call that unit one on the left.
So, we could put something like right there?
Yeah, I think if you just, but, I mean, that's a, you know, design, you can kinda lay out.
Alright.
Once you actually go to install them, but I think that might be a little more efficient. Other than that, it looks like you got them spaced pretty good, that the, I mean, again, they're, they're not parking lot lights, but they're gonna light it up to, so, so you can actually get in and out safely.
The wall, uh, one of the comments was the wall, and, uh, I, I have a detail, I think we, I showed you that before, on the detail sheet. So, I've already taken care of that.
That was on the proposed retaining wall?
Yes.
And, um, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, in regards to architecturals, have you provided those yet?
What, the buildings?
Yeah, exterior elevations, um.
Basically, I don't know if you're seeing the buildings we did on, um, fourteen eighty-nine Main Street.
I, I'm familiar with them.
Yeah, so it's basically, those buildings just jogged and, uh.
Well, is there a possibility that you get us at least exterior elevations? I think that's important to put in the file, um, just so we could, you know, look at, I mean, I know, I know what you did there, it's just providing it.
Cape style.
Yeah, and putting it in the file is important, I think. And obviously, in regards to the bedroom count, you know, well, that's border health saying, I'm sure you're doing two bedrooms per unit, yes, or one bedroom, one bedroom per. It's a four-bedroom, four-bedroom, um, per, alright, um, so, yeah, so I guess, you know, exterior elevations, I mean, you don't have to get the floor plans and stuff, but I think exterior elevations would be, would be good, alright?
So, the units, what are they, twenty-four by thirty?
Twenty-four by twenty-eight.
Twenty-four, twenty-eight, and they're gonna be a slab on grade, what, story and a half cap, as I always said, yeah.
Are they gonna be slab on grade?
Yeah.
Because the, the water table's so high, and to, you know, and we're so close to the street.
Yeah.
It just makes sense to walk in, the front door will be slab grade.
Yeah, I mean, it all.
Cape style, so they're not, it's not a tower ring.
Yeah, that, yeah.
You know, just an eight-foot wall in the front with a cape-style roof for the door.
Looks like it all makes sense, I mean, it all has to go together. You got a pump system because it's higher water table, you're gonna do a slab, 'cause you can't do a cellar hole, and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like it goes together. Was, um, was there something else on this? One more thing I'm gonna do?
That was it.
We, we added a hundred-foot, uh.
Yeah, I see that.
Hundred-foot, uh, well, I'm, we added revisions to all the, uh, the sheets. So, to me, it's, you know, it's just a couple of minor things, I just have to get the, uh.
Plant species.
Plant species and quantity on there, and then, um, yeah, just one little detail.
Yeah, I think Mr. Cushing took some notes through that. Sean, did you have any questions? Any notes you took on anything?
I know it's only a three-foot wall, did it matter? I know that you said that it was a segmental wall.
Good.
Did they want any detail besides that, whether there's gonna be batter or geogrid, or anything like that?
Yeah, um, I'll, I, I need to, I need to show, there's a, a membrane that's in front of it. And I'll, I'll, I'll add a couple of things to it, to, to straighten it out, but it's, it's only.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like two feet, sixty-two, and, and then, maybe three feet, and in most of it, it's like two feet high. Yeah.
To, to the wall comment, I don't know, um, is that something, if you go too high, you're gonna end up with needing a guardrail or something on top of it?
No.
No? So, you'll be.
Yeah.
Two feet or something around there? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing is, wasn't there something in regards to, um, the easement with the, with the?
It's on there.
Is it?
This is, this is the easement right here.
From the fire department.
It's a proposed fourteen-foot eas- access to the easement.
And you guys have the access to the building easement? Is that recorded, is what you're saying?
No, that's recorded.
It's on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the plan.
So, once this plan gets recorded, it will be part of the plan.
So, you have, okay, I understand.
So, uh, yeah, is that something that maybe you should have, you know, you're gonna have to draft an easement as well, that go with the plan?
Right.
Is that something, maybe we could have a draft when we actually get things finalized? I mean, you're gonna have to do it sooner or later? Just to make sure that, that that actually gets recorded, you know, just so it's not just, uh, on, shown on a plan as an easement, but that the easement actually is recorded on record.
I would agree.
Yeah, certainly I can do that.
Did you have a couple of other things to go over?
Um, yeah, I mean, I just, let me see, so that was, that was one of them. Um, obviously, when, when it comes time for the sprinklers, um, the fire line system, um, with annual inspections, I think, um, that was. Although, but I'm assuming that would be something that, um. Concom, I think we talked about that, um, water, uh, you say you spoke, you met with them, uh, four, four times?
Yeah, different, different, yeah.
Could you get a letter from the water department stating, um, what your agreement is? Alright, um, uh. Border Health, obviously, um, I mean, that will be done probably.
Most, uh, two weeks.
Exactly, um, and then the architecturals, I think we discussed, maybe give us exterior elevations, um, and you're getting a date with conservation. Obviously, keep us in a loop with that, that's important, since it's part of the, the entire thing, um. And, yeah, and then the other things, you know, the, 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 the plant details on the landscape. Plan, um, if you could list those, and the other few other items that Peter Palmeri had in his review.
I think probably a lot of this is stuff that, you know, if we, if you were ready to move forward, we could probably condition a lot of these things, but I think, you know, keeping this open would make more sense, just where you, you know, you need to go to conservation and to border health, you know, to get approvals that, if something were to change, and now you have to shift some components around, for whatever reason, that, um.
I mean.
You know, you, you don't wanna have to come back in for modifications.
The layout is what it is, I, that's what it's gonna be, and as far as like the septic system, that, that, that's, that'll be approved the way it is, and, um.
So, it's fully compliance design, the way you got it, and that's.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be approved, so I, I feel confident in that, it's just, it'll be a conservation challenge.
Yeah.
We just have to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, only in that regard, you know, like, like, I mean, and I'm not sure what, what your situation is with conservation, but when you were talking about stormwater, and the stormwater and the standard they were trying to hold you to, that, I guess, the project.
They, they can't, they can't, unless it's, unless it's in a regulation, they can't force us.
No, I, I understand that, um, what I'm just saying is, obviously, that would get clarified in the interim eat, also, and even if, you know, we gave you a conditional approval today, with all these conditions, you still can't do anything, right? You're still gonna go through Concom, you're still gonna go through border health, so, why wouldn't we take care of a lot of these punchless items in the interim, right? File with Concom, go through them, you'll work with them simultaneously, and hopefully, this will all come together on the same time. I, I think makes more sense, rather than trying to put an approval together with, uh, um, many conditions without the review engineer here tonight. That's just my opinion, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I think, all of the requirements, uh, or, or the, uh, comments by the review engineer, I, I've either addressed, or it's just a, you know, at a table, I, so I, I think that's a minor, to me, to me, I, I feel that's a minor thing, I just, it's just a, add that to it. As far as the lighting goes, that's, that's.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we're looking at it that way, I mean, conditions would be, obviously, you know what you have to do for the fire department, that's, they, they need, they, well, you're gonna give them an excess easement, um, to the rear of their building.
And.
Sprinklers, firearm system, you're gonna have to comply with annual inspections, I mean, that stuff's not gonna change.
Right.
Conservation approval, you know you have to get that, um, border health, septic design, you know you have to get that. Water department, as far as what they're gonna require, I mean, our condition is, is gonna be, from, from what I've gathered from the board for feedback, that it's gonna be.
We've met their requirements, except we just have to find out if he needs, uh, what's, if he needs a, a line for, for a fire.
For the, for the fire suppression, correct. And then architecturals, I mean, I, I think it would be nice to see some of the architecturals, too, um.
And, and additionally, the, you know, I know it's not a requirement, you only allow two, you only require to have two spaces per unit, but, you know, with adding the guest parking, you know, that's gonna change the impervious area, which is gonna modify your cals, which is, you know what I mean? I'm not saying that it's gonna, it's a, it's a game changer, I'm just thinking out, thinking out loud, that, you know, there's, there's, you know, you know, lighting, and on, and on, and on, so, what, I mean, what, my thing is, I know you're pushing for an approval tonight with conditions, but I'm, but I guess my question really is, what difference does it make with a, an approval with conditions tonight? 'Cause, you know, we think, I mean, I think, I don't know about the board, I think that, you know, that, that, you know, I love this, I love, I love to see this area of town cleaned up. I think this project is, you know, is really, you know, headed in the right direction, I think there's a few, um, you know, details that need to be cleaned up, but at the same time, how does it benefit you to get a conditional approval tonight? You still gotta deal with Concom, you still gotta deal with border health. Do you wanna answer that any?
No, I just have, just a comment, actually, the, um, building inspector who retired.
Yeah.
Had asked us to try to remove that building as quick as possible.
Okay.
But without a special permit, we couldn't apply to demo the building, because there are some safety issues there. The parties that own the building, the, the tenants of the building next door have put up snow fence and put a playground for their daycare on top of where the legion field's going. There's pieces of, chunks of the. There's pieces of, chunks of the building that people were, um, commenting, complaining about that they thought were hazardous, dangerous. So I had talked to Bob about tearing down the building, but if we tore down the building, we would lose.
The maintenance thing, but, eh, you know.
So, that, that, that comment is just, uh, just a comment that.
Understood.
You know, I mean, if.
So, I mean, so the building inspectors, he had, Bob's no longer the building inspector, right? I mean, we can bounce this over to him, so what he's saying is, you're, you're, you're looking to demolish that building and clean that area up.
In its entirety?
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, it's very.
Holding one wall?
I'm sorry?
There was no idea.
No.
No, the entire building's gonna be razed.
He's, he's, he's actually increasing the non, you know, the non-conformity, he's actually making, he's, you know, he's making it better, right? So he's trebled it, yeah, so, to me, that, you know, we can all acknowledge the building's here right now, right? So if this is kind of the contention of why you're looking to move, at least get that part of this done at this point in time, I mean, he's here to answer that question in terms of if he would be willing to issue a demo permit. I think the, um, uh, you know, as the board sits currently.
The only, the only question I would have on that, I mean, it's really a question.
Can you lose your rights?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a risk from the applicant's standpoint, but it's also, is conservation gonna sign off on you demoing the old building?
It's outside of the hundred feet.
But that's, that's, uh, if then, you know, if you're not finalized with them on the construction of the new building, I can't imagine they're gonna give you a blank permit to raise the old building.
Are you outside of the hundred feet on that, on the BBW? Where's the BBW in relation to the existing building?
There's the, there's the hundred, yeah.
Yes, you're, you're outside of it, so I mean, it's, it's outside of conservation jurisdiction. I, I mean, I think that's something he would look at when he was issuing a demolition permit, he would say, is this within a hundred feet? And he would look for a sign off from Concom, it's not, right? So you would issue a demo permit, uh, I don't know.
I just, you know, like I said, the, the rights that we would lose if the building was gone. As being not.
An approval first.
Yeah, without the approval.
What else, what, 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 let's add it, without the variances is what you're saying.
Right.
So, I mean, so there's two parts, there's the site plan approval, right? And there's the variances.
Right.
And this, yeah, well, sorry, the special permit also, I mean, so, what you're concerned, your concern is, is losing the right to your, to the, to the, to the two variances, of, yeah, the front and that left side, that's weird. Um.
I mean, if, if the board's comfortable with, I, I mean, I would be more concerned, you know, from the applicant's position, that if, if the board were to move forward and condition these things. You know, and you had to move something around because you found out later. If you're, if you feel confident that none of the puzzle pieces are gonna move around on you, then, you know. That, that would be my only concern if I was sitting in your position.
I have a shoe on, that we, we fit everything in, it is worth, we can't move it anywhere else.
If everything works here, and you, and you're confident you're going to get approvals from other departments, then, um, that would be my only concern if I was sitting in your position, um, because then you would have to come back in front of this board to, to modify that site plan.
I don't have a problem if, if we had to, if I might have.
I mean, how, how do we feel about, I mean, obviously, like we talked about, the, the fire department, the deed for the, uh, excess easement, for them to access the rear of their property, I mean, that's obviously something that's not gonna change, whether it's tied to tomorrow night or whatever the next meeting date is. The sprinklers, um, fire suppression, I mean, they're aware they have to do that regardless, that's nothing that's gonna change. Um, the firearm system, and then testing annually of the firearm and the fire suppression, that's just, you know, something that's gonna have to be done, required. Conservation approval, we've talked, we've discussed that, if they feel comfortable going forward, you know, rolling the dice with how the plan is set up, because that's how they're gonna have to present it to conservation, if they feel comfortable going forward that way, then, um, it's really just conservation, how do we feel about just making it conditional on the conservation approval? And, you know, water and highway, I know they've already discussed with the water department on, they're gonna do a one-inch tap for each unit, and then the only variable is, um. What they're gonna do for the fire suppression, are they gonna use that existing tap? If it's too much, they're gonna have to run, run a new one, and again, that's how I, I would wanna structure in a condition on water department is how we've always done it, it's gonna be, you know, conditional on them approving it. So if they get into building this, and the water department wants them to do X, Y, Z, that's what they have to do.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um, and then the, the other thing was, you know, border health and septic design, if, if it's a Title V compliant system, I mean, that's between you guys and, and the border health or the health, health agent actually, who's, um, signing off on those, but reviewed by, um, my review engineer for the border health. And then the only other thing we, we, we would like to see was architectials, I know we had talked about that. Um, I know we don't have any, and the guest parking. And again, you, you meet the requirement with eight, I think maybe if you, you could change that. Um, where you had two shown on the, on the gravel area there, if you could change that to at least maybe one, to get one more additional paved, if it doesn't complicate things with you for conservation, I think that'd be great, but, um, moving forward with, with that being removed and just the eight, I mean, I personally feel comfortable with, you meet the requirement, it's the same standard we've held, you know, every other applicant to. Um, two, two per dwelling, and you have four dwellings, you have eight spaces, so, uh, that, that meets the requirement. So I guess, to the board, I guess, how do you guys feel about conditioning a couple of those items? That, um, the, the couple that, that, that are potentially variables really for them, not for us. Our, our condition is gonna stay the same, it's gonna be subject to conservation approval, whether that's something that they have an issue with or not, when they go to file with them, that's not our, our problem, it's, they're gonna have to satisfy conservation, they're gonna have to satisfy water, and they're gonna have to satisfy border health. Um, it's stuff that could change for them as the applicant, not change for us or what we stand behind, we're gonna stand behind their decisions as, as other boards and departments.
Yeah.
Um. How, how do you feel about that, Bill?
Um, I guess my only thing is, is that, um, obviously, you have the guest parking spaces on the plan. Like I was trying to get back to earlier, I think the conservation is really controlling the stormwater, that was my point that I was trying to get across to you. Um, and, you know, we're merely special permit variances and the site plan. Ideally, I, I would like a conditional on that, that, you know, there is a guest po, at least one guest parking space there, eh, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you got two per unit, one guest parking space, I, I don't even know if it's necessary for the second. Um, but at least one guest parking space, there's only four units there, if you can fit a second in, great. Um, and then, um, what else? I'm just going through this, and all these details, oh, and then, obviously, you know, uh, uh, exterior elevations on the architectials, um, it'd have to be at the board's satisfaction of the elev, you know, the elevations on the architectials. And, um, and I think the other stuff was just, um, punchless items in regards to plant details, and as long as you satisfy those, and which would be another condition, obviously, to satisfy any punchless details. Um, you know, that it, more plant, you know, detail specific rather than design specific. I would be okay with it, um, except you're looking to do, um.
Alright, well.
Sean?
Well.
Do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Not really, I'd be comfortable with it then, because it's mainly has to do with the other boards after, so. Alright, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve special permit variance in site plan approval for eleven thirty-nine Main Street with conditions. Um. A fire department approval for, uh, the excess easement, fire suppression system, commercial firearm system with, with compliant testing that will be done annually. Um, that deed needs to be drafted and recorded with the plan when it's, when it's recorded. Uh, conservation approval. Water and highway approval. Uh, border health approval and septic design, um, approved of. Board. Board approval of, uh, architectural drawings of the dwellings with, uh, like Bill had mentioned, just, uh, exterior, exterior views and elevations. Um, interior floor plans would be, would be good, you'll need them eventually, so, um, I, I guess we'll just say a full set of architectials for it.
Yeah.
So a, a full set of architectural plans with, uh, floor plans. And one additional guest parking spot. Uh, I believe, I believe that was all the.
And then any minor, any of the minor details that, uh, that need to be rectified.
So, so I'll add that to, uh, any, any punchless items on the review from Merrill. Um, minor stuff, but, um, that stuff will need to be done too, so I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion for all of that.
Oh.
So moved.
Alright, I second it.
Alright, we got, moved second, um. We'll go to a vote, Sean?
Aye.
Bill?
I'm an aye.
And I'm an aye also. Alright, so.
So that includes the variances, right?
That's the variance, special permit and site plan approval.
Yes.
So, um, as far, as far as, uh, you know, you guys obtaining a demolition permit and conservation stuff, I mean, that's between the, the, the building department, um.
Yeah. It is. Especially with kids.
Yeah, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing for eleven thirty-nine Main Street.
So moved.
Second. Alright, moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night, guys. Alright, so the next item on the agenda, um. It's eight o'clock, this was scheduled for seven-ten for John Tagliari, case number twenty-one, SP thirteen for Shaw's Plaza. Um. Okay, uh, the Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one at seven-ten PM. The Hanson Town Hall Meeting Room A under Master General law, chapter forty-eight on the application of John Tagliari for site plan approval under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws and a special permit under section eight D three to allow for personal training space, massage therapy and yoga, DBA, tag team fitness, and related signage at four-thirty Liberty Street, unit number eight, Shaw's Plaza, map eighty-two lot seven, Hanson Assessor's map, property is located in the business zone. Mister Tagliari?
Yes.
Do you wanna just give us just a quick overview of your business? You can come up front if you want, um, just give us a quick overview of what you plan on doing, um, hours of operation, that kinda stuff, how many employees you got? Yeah, days, days of the week, just, uh, just a quick overview of all that stuff.
Uh, so the business currently runs in Midmore, I'm moving into Hanson, uh, we live in Hanson, so it's just, it's gonna be nice to be here. Um, it's personal training, uh, run coaching, um, nutrition, massage therapy, and then, um, uh, small group classes and yoga classes as well are being added to the menu. Um, I have a yoga teacher that will be working out of the space, ten ninety-nine employee, not, uh, full-time. Uh, hours of operation will be seven-thirty till, I believe, nine PM, and that's Monday to Saturday, Sunday closed.
How many employees?
Uh, I'm sorry, Saturday's not gonna be that late, Saturday will be seven-thirty in the morning, seven in the morning until.
Okay.
You wanted to just get yourself?
How many employees, I'm sorry?
Well, uh, full-time employees, none, but I have a ten ninety-nine for the yoga teacher, so she's a, a workhorse.
So, I'm sorry, what were your hours during the week?
Monday to Friday will be seven-thirty till nine. Now Shaw's is open till ten.
Yeah, so.
So I know that I'm allowed to stay open till at least then, but that'll be when.
Yeah, we, I mean, I, I think it would make sense to put that probably for Saturday al, also, just because if, in the event you end up increasing your hours on Saturdays.
Yep.
Why not put it in the decision that way? Yeah?
Thank you. Um, I'm a one-on-one personal trainer, um, I'm not a gym, I'm a personal training space, so it's not like there's gonna be a ton of people coming in now. Ninety percent of the time, if not more than ninety percent of the time, will be me and one client. Um, if there's a yoga class, we have a maximum of six, small personal ch, small group classes, maximum of six as well. So at any given time, the most will be seven in the building.
So it's mostly just one-on-one personal training?
Yeah, yeah, my, my, um, business model is one-on-one personal training. So I have a current client base which are all following me, um, and it's, uh, it's not like a gym where people just have a membership, come in, work out, there's fifty people in there, it's me and my client most of the time.
It's all scheduled, yeah.
The space has been converted into, it was a, uh, twelve-and-a-half by sixty-foot box with a seven-by-seven bathroom. We added two walls, um, to make a massage area, uh, free standing walls, uh, the owner of the building did that already. It was repainted, and it's, uh, pretty much it.
So at the, if you had to guess, like, at the most congested time, what's the most amount of people and vehicles do you think you'd have added to that park? Eight at most, eight, eight people and eight vehicles?
If she had six in the yoga class plus the yoga teacher and myself, that's it.
Yeah, so I, I don't.
Constantly nine, um, and that would be at the absolute most. I can't do a training client if she's doing the yoga class, cause she's on the floor. The most I could do would be maybe take a massage client at the time, since it's a separate space. So nine would be the absolute most people having a building at any time.
Yeah, the, the reason I asked was just really for parking, but I, I don't think there's any concern with the parking there. Do you feel there's a concern for parking there?
They have sufficient parking, yeah, I think they have access parking as a matter of fact, but, um, I don't think that's an issue. And that's obviously part of the special permit is, you know, we look at that, whenever a business is going into a space, we look at parking and things of that nature, but I think, um, that plaza, um, especially on that side there, seems to have plenty of parking.
Right, especially where we are, because Dollar Tree is down from us, Shaw's is down from us, we're in that center zone where there's not a lot going on.
Yeah.
It's, it's us, the barber, and the Edward Jones.
I would agree, those spots are usually all open.
Yeah.
So, so I think it's just a matter of getting like the details, so you have the hours, you have the days of operation, you have the number of employees. Um, is there any more information you need, Virginia?
No, you have your signed, I understand you had to apply for your signed permit?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, that's all, uh, I believe been taken care of.
Okay.
Uh, spoke to the border health, spoke to the fire department, um, everything you asked me to do, we did.
Okay.
Good guy.
That's what we like, someone that actually does the right thing.
All the paperwork's handed in, everything we take care of.
So, so you, you, you are where you have to get, like you said, a s, assigned permit, your hours of operation, you said, seven to ten PM, right? Monday through Saturday. Um, and it's just really one, one employee, but I, I mean, I don't even see a reason to really try to limit you to employees if you were to hire employees, I don't, I. Like Bill said, that the main concern that we have, we want more businesses in town, trust me, we need more, um, we welcome you. But, uh, it's really just the parking issue, you know, and, and there's not one there, there's not, it wa, it was.
Right. That's why I was, when I found that space, I was surprised it was still open, to be honest.
Yeah, well, for a while it was, you know, it was caving in, and it was.
Yeah.
Wasn't rebuilt, right? So, it must have been built recently, um, so you're not doing any further build out, am I correct?
No, no, sir.
Alright, so you won't need a build requirement, obviously, since that's done.
Just turnkey walk-in.
Alright, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, site plan approval. Um. And special permit for John Tagliari, Tag Team Fitness at four-thirty Liberty Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second, okay. Um, moved and seconded, we'll go to a vote, Sean?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Kevin, I'm an aye also.
Alright, good luck, appreciate you.
Good luck, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Do you have the other votes? So you thought, what do you?
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for Tag Team Fitness.
Thank you so much.
Four-thirty Liberty Street, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need that one right there?
Uh, no, I don't. Alright, um, last meeting of tonight, scheduled for seven-twenty. It's eight oh eight. We have application from Christopher Lyons, case twenty-one, JL-ten for eight-thirty Main Street. This was continued from July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, I'll read the hearing notice into the record. Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one at seven-thirty PM at Hanson Town Hall Selectman's Meeting Room under Master General law, chapter forty-eight, section six, on the application of Chris Lyons for a special permit slash variance under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, section six C, six B, and section eight D three A through F, and section nine B two A through C, to allow for the addition of a three-bedroom apartment at eight-thirty Main Street. Old Hanson Hobby Shop, changing the property into a three-family building, map forty-two lot forty-three, Hanson Assessor's map. Property is located in a Residence B zone and is pre-existing non-conforming. Um, this was continued to tonight, September fourteenth. Uh, Mister Lyons?
Um, well, I've looked into a lot of, uh.
Could you just state your name?
Uh, Chris Lyons.
And your address for the record, please?
Uh, ten Gabriel Lane, Plymouth, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
So I've, uh, I've started my due diligence, due diligence on this, and, um, it's not quite enough time for me. I do request an extension.
Okay, do you have any new information for us today or anything or?
Um, no.
Anything from the last meeting?
Uh I just, I have counsel on board. It was taking me a while to get counsel. Um I do have um the previous owner, trying to get in touch with them. They've been away. Um I'm told I can get in touch with him probably this week. And uh that's pretty much where I'm at right now. I just need an extension. I was trying to get the board to take a look on the inside, to do a site visit. Uh I'll do a request for that.
Yeah, we we did get your request. Um this was continued from, let's see, when was this? July twentieth, so that was what? Almost two months ago. So um that was what, last week? I think you made the request?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, so um that's why we couldn't get out there, I mean, kind of short notice, you know what I mean? Um but i- if you'd like to schedule a site visit, um we could do that. We could schedule it. We'd have to post it because it would be a quorum, it'd be a meeting. Um if if the, you know, if the board were to all show up there, it's technically a meeting, so we'd have to post it. If you want to pick a um. You know, a certain time, I don't know, do you you have a tenant in there or something that?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe you can get in touch with with Virginia and we can figure out a time, maybe that kind of works for for the board.
Normal hours typically, obviously, uh.
Well, we're all volunteers, so we we all work regular jobs, so we'd have to kind of figure something out. If you want to get in touch with her and, I don't know, mornings, probably sometime in the morning.
I could make it happen unless there was something really big going on. So just tell me what what you're thinking.
Probably a morning would be best. Middle of the week, because Mondays are always tough, Fridays are tough, so. Um if you want to get in touch with her and and um we can we can kind of all coordinate with each other and we can schedule something to to take a look and see what's going on there.
Sure.
Uh Mister Chairman, just keep in mind that we're gonna need forty-eight hours notice to post that, so if you were to call her on Monday. Yeah, we're we're gonna need at least forty-eight hours to post that, um since we don't have like definitive date at this point in time.
Okay.
Alright.
Want to continue it, buddy, want to?
Sean, how do you feel about um uh this this has been continued once from, so this is the second?
Yeah.
Second night on this. It was open on July twentieth. We really didn't have much much information on this. Um.
Mister Chairman, I would I would just ask the applicant, um you know, since you have your attorney on board, if you if we're gonna give you, you know, continuance on this, obviously. You know, we'd like to see some information relevant to your application. Um and I think that um, you know, you should have your attorney here. At the, that's what you so choose to do and um any other.
I know he hasn't applied for an attorney because I got a call late this afternoon from uh a worker over at a law firm that he's using. Or tentatively scheduled to use to see how far along we were with this, so.
Okay, and then any other information you can provide that can help us make a decision?
Okay.
You know what I mean? So just so we're not kicking this can down the street, because.
Yeah, yeah, I I intend to have it all resolved.
How do you feel, Sean, about allowing it, you know, one one continuance, I guess, for an extension?
Yeah, I mean. I'm not exactly completely happy about we have no new info.
Right, I mean, that's 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 kind of how I feel about it.
Expected that we continue with that he has counsel involved. I would hope to see his counsel the next time. He can do what he wants, but that's. I think it would be recommended as far as what I think. And um I think that we should also plan a site visit in the meantime.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I think it's fair to say that, you know, if the board were to grant you a continuance on this, this board's probably gonna make a decision at the next meeting on this. Um and again, this is a, we can only make a decision on this application that's put in front of us. Um we can't really make a decision on if you have an illegal apartment there or if you don't. I mean, that's between you and and the building department, the selectman, whoever wants to enforce that. So if something illegal is going on there, I mean, that's not really, that's not up to us to enforce or to do something. This board is here to, you know, to hear this application and approve or deny this application. Um so a- again, that's, this is what's in front of us. This is what we're supposed to act on. And I I think it would be fair to say that this board is probably gonna want to put this to a vote to either approve or deny this this application. The way this is submitted, with the documents that it's submitted with um for the for the next meeting. So I would just be prepared to, you know, have everything together in order to present what you need to present to this board.
Okay.
Um so I guess with, is there anything else on that?
No.
How much time do you feel you'd need against Lyons to?
Uh I would say six, six weeks.
Six weeks. Is that okay with the board?
What's what's our next available date anyways?
Uh however, we have uh three lined up for the twenty-eighth of September. And we have three for the nineteenth of October because we've got vacation in between for Joni.
That's a month.
Uh but he could come in the nineteenth, that's a month. I don't know if he could make that or it would have to be.
That's five months.
Huh?
What what do we get for the first week in November, Virginia?
Uh.
Second or the ninth?
The ninth, we have pushing trails. If you want to do the second, that's election day.
We'll, we'll, we'll the twenty-third.
Why don't we put them on the nineteenth, Virginia? October nineteenth. How do you guys feel about that? That's five weeks. I mean, it's. This that that's.
You have three, you shares three on that?
That's all right. No, this one is questionable. I'm waiting to see if they're.
This was applied July twentieth. I think that's sufficient time, you know, to to get the applicant. If they got their stuff together or they don't, um.
Yeah.
But it's lined on at seven thirty and then this person can move, but they haven't sent, brought in their paperwork yet, so I can move you on this.
So so we're going to?
October?
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the application for uh, I'm sorry, where are we?
Christopher Lyons.
Christopher Lyons, eight thirty Main Street to uh October nineteenth at seven thirty P M. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I need you to sign it.
So moved.
Okay, move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have legal terms, so they're gonna want to. Thank you so much.
Alright, so that's that's continued to the uh nineteenth of October, seven thirty P M.
Alright, you're all set.
Okay, great.
Okay, um.
Here's the phone to prove.
So we have, yeah, we have some minutes to approve and.
Okay.
Okay, so we got for decisions, we had the extension for country rentals, four sixty-one Ponza Street. We signed that.
We signed the two decisions.
We signed the other decision for two seventy High Street for Brian Reese. That was conversion to a two-family. And we signed the decision for thirty Lakeside Road, which was a special permit for an in-law addition. And that was also a variance application which was denied, so that was able to move forward with meeting setbacks. And I believe that was it. Um we did.
That's an informal here.
Yep.
I'm just leaving it there.
Yeah, well, we did, we can, we can talk about it. Um that.
Before we do that? We don't have to have the sign.
We had, we had tabled that from from last meeting. Um.
The building inspector just has a a question. Uh this is something that's.
Yeah, 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 why don't we hold off on that and and let's get through this first and you guys, you can discuss that.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so we had two ten Liberty Street. It was just informal. They were looking for feedback. That was on our last agenda. That ran late at our last meeting, so we just tabled this through tonight. Again, it's just an informal. They were looking for feedback information on this. I mean, I I briefly looked at it and to me.
Which one is that, Kevin?
This is two ten Liberty Street.
You know, the the Brian Winnetka, the one that the Cowan's property.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, yeah. I I mean, uh I haven't looked into this, dug into it too deep. It's it's something informal. They're looking for feedback. To me, at first glance, it looks like a a a form A retreat lot. I mean, I don't know, unless they have more information on it, I'm not really sure what they're looking for. Um there's a, there's an old application in here with with a denial, I believe, Virginia.
Yeah.
It was for a denial of a of a variance, so I'm not really sure. Um they were looking to originally do two houses on it or something and and it was denied. So I'm not really sure why this is here. I mean, I I don't know. I mean, did you get a chance to look at any of this?
I haven't looked at it, no.
So it it's basically, to me, unless I'm missing something and this is something that they have more information on, to me, it looks like a your your typical hammerhead retreat lot. It has double the area, it's got forty feet of frontage, um exclusive of the access portion and stuff. The house was built, I believe, after. I'm not sure.
It was built in nineteen um nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty, in the eighties and nineties.
There's an existing dwelling now.
I mean.
And then they're looking to do what?
They're looking to, so this is Alden Way over here. Yeah, they were, they were looking to, they want to, this is, this, there's almost two two lots here. There's essentially two lots and they're connected by like, it's, you know. Sixteen feet of of area, sixteen feet wide that connects them. So, you know, they're they're used together. Um they were looking to subdivide this off, build another house here, which it really, it wouldn't affect this adversely at all. However, the way this, I believe, was permitted, it would have to get booked at as, you know, the original building permit when this, when this was pulled. It was permitted as a retreat lot, because if it was, it needs this area to be in conformance.
Unless it had a frontage variance.
Right, unless they had a frontage variance and they attached this showing it was denied, so I'm not really sure. Unless there's something I'm missing, I don't know. But I mean, that's, again, this is just informally looking at it, you know.
So, I mean, I guess, so I have looked this a little bit um way back when, you know, this has been kicking around for a while. And to me, I looked at the folder and I and I kind of found the same information that we have here. And it, to me, it was permitted as a retreat lot, because it was, yes, it was. It was was built in the ninety, early nineties. And um and yeah, I mean, he's basically looking for us to take a retreat lot and cut it in half because he's got adequate frontage and turned it into tr- an additional building lot. Um I don't, I don't think we ever set that, um you know. You know, given an approval of that nature before, and I'm not sure if I'd be comfortable doing it. So unless he has further information to offer based on the um, what I'm looking at, I mean, it doesn't even seem like, am I, something he should waste his time with?
Yeah, I I'd need a lot more information to really look at it any closer, but um again, that was just something informal.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on this? Was there anything on this that you had?
No.
Okay, alright, so that was something that was supposed to be on for last last meeting, was just informal on that. Um. We took care of the decisions, those are signed. We do have some draft minutes we gotta go over that um we can all just take a look at real quick. And the only other thing that I had, I just wanted to bring to the rest of the board's attention. This wasn't on our agenda. It's something that just popped up and it's, again, it's not related to really the board. It was just um someone had filed a complaint against me um from from one of our hearings. And I submitted a response to the town manager. And so if you guys are interested in seeing the complaint or seeing what the response was, you're more than welcome to check in with the town manager to see it. Um I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Again, it's not, I didn't respond to it on, you know, as a board member, responded to it on a personal level. So it's nothing to do associated with the board. It was a complaint about just me, not about the board, but I just still wanted to bring it to you guys' attention. And so it was really just the draft minutes, I believe, is all we had left.
And you all received, you you had received these minutes way back, you know, because I had, was going up for Constantine and Cohen.
Yes.
But this is just bringing them all up to date.
Yes, yes. And we and we even had these actually in our folder at the last meeting, but we uh we ended up tabling.
You don't have to sign them, by the way.
Right, right. Um we we had just tabled them since the last meeting, just because we were running so late last meeting, but um. So did you guys get a chance to look at this one? That was um, that one, I know we had all seen that.
Yes, I have.
That one, I know. That was an older one. That one we had moved upstairs. That was the night the selectman ran late. That night there, we actually, we moved up, we put signs downstairs and we moved up to this meeting room.
This was modified. This one here, was it? This was amended, wasn't it?
No, that that is the minutes from, that's the minutes from that meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
That that was actually, that was the the original um annual reorganization, um June twenty-second.
Which is, which has since been.
That that has been addressed, yes. We, this was, this was our, this was our our first reorganization. And then this other one here that Sean has was the other reorganization. And then.
Okay.
We have one more that was, I believe, no, we had already, the one that we had already corrected, well, corrected any potential issues. We've already done that one, accepted the Minnesota.
That supersedes these two.
Correct, correct.
So that's out of the way.
So I guess if we're we're all.
Keep them in a stack.
Okay.
The website.
Yeah. Um and then I guess, so this, 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 yeah.
So what? Some of these don't say draft on them, Virginia.
No, some of them don't. I did, uh, some of them have been in that folder for a while, so I had to give those to Constantine to reach that deadline, so. The drafts are the most recent ones that I did, so.
Alright, so let me just uh get, want to just take a note, Bill? So we have minutes from um.
Do you want the, do you want the date or do you want the?
Uh July twentieth.
Yep.
We have May eleventh.
May eleventh, yeah.
Yep, so that was another July twentieth.
We got a July sixth. I think these have already been done now.
Yeah, these, I think you've already done this.
August third.
August, yep.
Um June twenty-second. We have June eighth.
Yes.
May twenty-fifth. May eleventh.
Yeah, we got that one, yeah.
And I believe that's it. Alright, so.
So, just on. Yeah, so so there was.
Alright, so we have, so I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes for May eleventh, May twenty, uh I'm sorry, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, June eighth, twenty twenty-one. June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. July twentieth, twenty twenty-one and August third, twenty twenty-one. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Um all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that takes care of the minutes. Um.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, um so I'll uh I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um adjourned at eight twenty-seven.